Welcome to the Alatha Board of Education meeting. At Ravenwood School. We will be responsible, responsible. We will be responsible, responsible. Ravenwood rocks!
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the beating of the Alatha Board of Education for our regular meeting for the month of August. Mrs. Carpenter, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Ashley, here. Mr. Churchman?
Here.
Dr. Allen? Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Poland?
Here.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Here.
Okay, and we have a quorum to conduct the business of the meeting. And Dr. All, would you please work on the Pledge of Allegiance item for us?
Yes, I'd like for Heather and Matthew to come forward. Heather will be a 3rd grader at Brom Elementary. And this is Heather Smoker, and this is her brother Matthew. And he's going to be a 1st grader at Brom Elementary. And I'll tell you a little bit more about their parents in just a minute. So they're going to help us lead in the Pledge of Allegiance. So would you face to the flag? And would you join us in leading the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Matthew, I'm going to let you go first. Matthew will be in 1st grade. The things he likes about school are physical education and mathematics, and he loves to run. And Matthew, are your parents here?
Yeah.
Would you like to say their names and have them stand up?
Robert Smoker and Vicki Smoker.
Would they please stand? And then Heather will be a 3rd grader at Brom Elementary. And the things she likes about school are math, reading, and writing. And she was recognized at the end of the school year for her Guiding Principles essay. And remember, our students all have guiding principles that help for character development. And she was recognized for her essay on our district's guiding principles. She also told me there was one more thing her parents failed to mention about her in the, sort of, the resume that she has. So I told her she could tell you.
I was recognized for two art postings on the walls.
Great.
Yeah.
Here at the Ed's Education Center. And if you recall, we have student art posted in different exhibits, elementary, junior high, and high school throughout the year. I'd also like to let you know that Robert Smoker, her father, is a school district employee, Matthew's father. And he actually provides great service to this building. The way, the beauty of this building, the grounds, all of the mechanical functions, everything that happens in this building is a result of Robert Smoker. So we appreciate the Smokers having their children here today, and appreciate Robert. He's a great leader. He's also our representative for wellness in this building. And he makes sure, I don't always follow what he says, but he makes sure that we're all up to date on our wellness initiatives. Because every building has that facilitator, and Robert is for ours. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. There is Brian Lowe, principal at Brom Elementary. Why don't you stand up so they can get a good look at you, Brian?
Well, thank you all very much. And Dr. All, now we'll move on to an overview of the meeting?
Yes. Following the overview, we're going to have the introduction of some of our new administrators who are filling positions at our schools and other functions. Following that, we have some presentations this evening. One is a presentation on a proposed location for elementary school number 33, the last school that's in this current bond that was passed in 2003. There'll be an update on Miracle League baseball information that we discussed with the board before. District's crisis management team overview. Dr. Hall will really talk about something that we want to be prepared for but hope never happens. And then Dr. George will give us an update on the recent Kansas Supreme Court decision. We'll do recognitions and awards. And Mike Poland will be assisting and representing the board with me for that. And then following recognitions and awards, at about 7 o'clock, will be our public comments section. Following public comments, we will have our consent agenda, which, there are items that represent matters that the board may approve without detailed discussion. Or any item on the consent agenda may be removed for separate discussion as an action item upon request by the superintendent or any board member. The board is receiving supporting information on all items prior to action on the consent agenda. Following the consent agenda are the action bids, contracts, and agreements. And there is an opportunity for action on architectural fees for science room additions at Alatha East and South, architectural fees for operations at the Service Center addition, and a copy paper bid. And then we will continue our budget development. The board will take action on publication of our budget and the notice of hearing for publication. And then that will lead to a special meeting on Wednesday, August 16th, at the Education Center to actually approve the operating budget and other budgets for the district. There's also an action item following the first presentation for boundary adjustment for undeveloped land formerly within the Regency Place attendance area, action on proposed location of elementary school number 33. And then there will be action tonight, following the executive session, on compensation policies and benefits. And then the board will also need to set a meeting place for the August 17th special meeting. We have the date. This is a joint meeting of the City Council and the Alatha School Board. And the location will have to be notified for patrons to know where that is. And then the City Council will be hosting that. Then there are future action items. Following that, some written information on the calendar events. And then the recessed executive session to consult with an attorney on matters deemed privileged, an attorney-client relationship, to discuss negotiations to protect the public interest in negotiating a fair and equitable contract, and to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Thank you.
Now we'll move on to item 1.04 on the agenda, which is the introduction of new administrators. And Dr. All, are you handling that item as well for us?
First of all, I'd like to have the staff, because there's a few of them, I'll just have these group come up as a group. Alatha North High School, our new principal, Dr. Connie Heinon. You'll come forward. Following her is Lane Green. He is assistant principal and athletic director. And following Lane is Carrie Lane, who, Lane and Lane, one's the first name, one's the last. Carrie Lane, who's been a student of ours, a teacher of ours, and also a former assistant principal at Santa Fe Trail. And Randy Salisbury, former teacher at North, who's now assistant principal.
Yes, I know you do. Randy, good to see you again.
Now, we didn't add all these people to Alatha North. I just want to make that clear. These are replacements for a person who's retired and another transfer in the district to another school opportunity. And an employee who went, decided to go teach in the classroom, who was our former A.D., Jerry Banks. So these are replacement positions. They all came about, they're great. We've worked very hard to bring you the very best, brightest, most dedicated, compassionate, caring people to this school. There's lots of vision. So we're ready to go. Thank you very much. I'd like Natalie Browning, do I see her? And Kim Thorpe to come up. Natalie, who's coming forward, is our new principal at Prairie Center Elementary School. And Natalie formerly was a teacher at Chisholm Trail Junior High. And following Natalie is Kim Thorpe. And she's going to be principal at Ridgeview Elementary School. Kim came back to us after seven years. She's been teaching in Catholic private schools, was formerly a student teacher at Ridgeview Elementary School. And these are two new elementary principals. And so we're very pleased to have them. And like the team at Alatha North, we have great, great expectations for these two principals, their schools, and their community. And they've had a great kickoff. In Kim's case, we hired her about 24 hours before we asked her to report. And I remember when I visited with her, what is it, a week ago, Monday? And you said, "If I get this position, when will you like me here?" And I said, "Well, if we can make this work, tomorrow would be nice, but we have to be here by Wednesday morning." And she had enrollment Tuesday. Okay. So we're talking about, and Natalie I know has been working day and night since the day that she took this job at Prairie Center. And so we appreciate both of you. Thank you. And then on instructional coordinators here, we had some people that retired last spring with Harbin Miles in mathematics. And so I'd like Joanne Hyatt to come forward. And Joanne Hyatt has been an outstanding math teacher at Alatha East High School. Many, many recognitions. You've seen her in front of this board many times. And she's our new K-12 mathematics coordinator.
Joanne, nice to see you.
Kay Haas, language arts coordinator. As you recall, Luanne Hermrich was our language arts coordinator. And she became our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. This was a position that we provided last year to ensure and enhance the quality of all of our work. And Kay has been an instructional resource teacher and primarily worked with our secondary schools. And then finally, Martha Gabel. And Martha is our new K-12 fine arts coordinator. And again, Marge Banks, if you'll recall, retired at the end of last year. And Martha was a vocal music teacher at Bentwood Elementary School. Did I say that right?
I'm Martha.
Okay, good. And Martha has had lots of experience in the district and will be providing great leadership in the area of fine arts. And that includes vocal, instrumental, as well as visual arts and theater and drama. So she's got a broad range of areas. And again, you're talking about three excellent people, quality, quality leadership that provide opportunities for art teachers to do their very best in each of these fields with an outstanding curriculum and all the support that goes along with that in meeting the standards. And in mathematics, that's huge. And in language arts, with reading, that's huge. But also, we're known for the arts, the fine arts in this district. And so we're pleased to have all three of you providing leadership. Thanks. And then for Claire, Alternative Education Center and all alternative programs. Is Joe Baker here? Okay, he's not able to be here yet. We'll have him in September. And then Amy McLean Jensen. And we have, again, we had not a retiree, but in Joe's case, he had to move back east. And so we replaced his position with Joe Baker, who had been formerly in alternative education there and providing assistance. And then Amy McLean Jensen actually then replaced Joe's position as an assistant administrator. And what is really exciting about having Amy in this role, among many reasons, is that she brings with her, having come from the instructional resource teachers ranks, all strong instructional focus to our alternative education programs. And these are kids that get these alternative experiences, but at the same time, they have to meet the same standards, Kansas standards and district standards. And we try to do it in a way that works for them. And so Amy's going to bring a real high level of expertise to these programs and these students. Mike?
Can I show a little pride also and claim her as my niece?
Yes. Yes, you can show some pride. But anyway, we're thrilled. Thank you, Amy. Couldn't help yourself, could you? I understand, thank you.
Okay, well, welcome, one and all. We appreciate your service to our district. And congratulations on your achievements. Board members, we'll now move on to the second section of our agenda, item 2.01, which deals with information presentations. First item is proposed location of elementary school number 33. And Dr. All, did you have any comments before Chris presents to us?
The only comment I would make right now is that this is part of completing a conversation that started last fall about growth in the elementary areas. And we talked about Regency Place area, the southeast part of Alatha School District, in terms of growth. And so his conversation tonight will reflect the third piece that he informed the board about, which was the northwest area and particularly the growth at Meadow Lane. So I'll let him go ahead and make his presentation and comments, and then we can take whatever questions are there. Thanks.
Well, we'll go quickly through the first slide since Dr. All kind of summed up the first slide there. This is a continuation of the plan. Looked at Regency Place, which you guys approved the four-room addition. Sunnyside, which we've got Madison Place Elementary under construction for, and now Meadow Lane. This is an image there of Meadow Lane's attendance area. Covers about 10 and 1/2 square miles bordered by K-10, I-35, K-7, and for the most part, 119th Street. Meadow Lane sits in the extreme western part of its attendance area. It opened in 1951 as part of the Meadow Lane School District. It was one of five schools that merged, school districts that merged together to form the Alatha School District. And since it was built, it was built, I think, as just two or three rooms. It's had six additions to get it to the size it's currently at. Here's a picture of the latest addition. It was the multipurpose room and the new entrance at East that was completed last year. Just, this information right now is based off of last year's information. As, we just had enrollment two days ago, but we aren't quite quick enough to be able to get all that information to you there. We'll process that there. Is that, the building has 23, last year had 23 first-through-six classrooms there highlighted. Only two kindergarten rooms. Band is up there. Music on the stage, normal in our elementary schools. Some flex space. These are kind of due to the additions and configurations of the building. This is kind of unique flex space for this building. The three wet areas, these are the smaller areas. These aren't the large activity areas that you would find in an Arbor Creek, a Manchester Park, or a Ravenwood. These are the smaller areas. Last year, based on the staff and how the building was used, it had a capacity of 588 students. And they were using 86% of their rooms. This is kind of a chart showing the enrollment history of Meadow Lane. As we talked about, historically Meadow Lane has been, had been a very stable school. Its population has hovered around 400 students. But it has been gradually building. Went from 398 to last year having a population of 444. What we're projecting, though, is that growth is really going to accelerate in the area. And that this year's enrollment, we've projected over 500 students there. We'll find out in a few days how close we are to that first number of 509. And as you can see, the capacity there at 588. And as the capacity's going up, as they're going to be forced to convert some of their activity or the wet areas to classrooms, and doing some things, moving their, they had a behavioral disorder program that had to be moved to Cedar Creek to make more space at the school. And why is it going to go up? It's just strictly because of residential growth here. As you can see in this slide right here, there were 348 residents that were permitted in the Meadow Lane attendance area this past year. Far and away greater than any other school in the attendance area. Most of these that were permitted were single-family houses, which Bentwood is right up there at 296. But out of that 296 at Bentwood, 200 of those are apartment units. So it will have a lesser impact on, the 296 students at Bentwood will have a drastically less impact than the 348 students at Meadow Lane. And over the past, and in 2004, the year before that, they were, they had, they were the third highest, they had the third highest total of development activity in the school. All the residential growth is occurring over 14 different subdivisions. And you can kind of see here where those subdivisions are located at. Right now, as of last month, there are 1,976 lots that have been approved in the Meadow Lane attendance area that haven't been built on. And then in the little green grassy areas through there are undeveloped acreages. And there are 512 undeveloped acres within the Meadow Lane attendance area. That 512 undeveloped acres will probably translate into over 1,000, over 1,200 new residential units. So the boundary, the boundary study group looked at several different, the three basic options of how to relieve, providing enrollment relief at Meadow Lane. First off, looked at additions. From talking with our construction manager there, based on the fact that it's had so many additions previously, adding on to the building again really isn't a feasible solution. Looked at boundary adjustments. Meadow Lane adjoined Cedar Creek Elementary, Manchester Park, Mahaffey, Ravenwood, and Washington. Of those, Cedar Creek, Manchester Park, and Ravenwood are growing very rapidly there. Cedar Creek will probably have, from looking at numbers for this, for the 2006 year so far, Cedar Creek is by far and away the leading, have the most new homes being constructed in it this year. Manchester Park is probably fourth on that list. And Ravenwood is probably seventh on that list of elementary schools. So those three schools are continuing to see rapid growth. Washington is a school that's already at, nearing its capacity. And then Mahaffey has some space, but not enough to provide adequate enrollment relief to Meadow Lane. So the third option is to construct a new elementary school. The district owns land at approximately 115th and Woodland that we bought through, with money from, as Dr. All said, from this current bond issue that could be used to relieve overcrowding at Meadow Lane. What we would project is to have this school open for the 2008-09 school year. And that we will work with the residents and staff of the Meadow Lane community to develop boundaries as we get closer to that opening. If the board agrees that this should be the next school built. Any questions?
One thing I might add is that the funding for this last elementary school that is in this current bond, as well as the land, and I'm not sure that that was on there. But that would be the last school out of this 2003 bond.
The 2003 bond had money for three elementary schools. Those three elementary schools were Ravenwood, that opened in 2005, or, yeah. Manchester Park, which will open in 2007, or Madison Place, excuse me, that will open in 2007. And then Elementary School 33.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions?
I have some comments on this issue. Thank you, Mr. Greilip, for your presentation. Location aside, which is really the issue in front of us here, I think as a board, some thoughts that have struck me that we need to give strong consideration to really revolves around, if indeed we move forward with this location, what will the size of the school be? And I would like to certainly get staff input and board input on, does it make sense to consider a school that maybe is on the larger side rather than the smaller size, based on some of the historical trends of what we've experienced with new schools? Some other pieces to the puzzle here that I think are important that we need to address, and Mr. Greilip touched upon the boundary issue. I think there are some inherent boundary issues here that need to be visited and reviewed. I also think it's important that we take a hard look at diversity through the whole corridor of this area to make sure that we're doing everything we can to adequately balance that. And so to me, it becomes a much broader discussion.
One of the things that I might mention is that, and I haven't had a chance to have this discussion with staff, but in looking at the size and the infrastructure that we've put in the more recent schools of Sunnyside and Arbor Creek, which were larger, I think the school, if I'm right, at 167th and Warwick is a little smaller because of the area. Or is that infrastructure of the school the same?
It is even slightly larger than Arbor Creek, smaller than Sunnyside, but is designed to be added on to. Potentially, it could be the largest of the elementary schools.
Okay. And so you've got options there that could, depending on how large the board wanted to add on to the school, whether now or later, that is built into the features, at least at the last school, and would be a consideration in this school, however that might be done. Okay.
And I look at the size being, certainly we want to be prudent, and we want to defer to recommendations by the staff here. But I think, from my viewpoint, building a school that's larger rather than smaller with some, versus anticipated additions down the road is pennies on the dollar as far as cost goes. And those are certainly alternatives that can be bid that way so we can make those kinds of decisions. And it'll cause us to look a little deeper into the crystal ball, but I think it's a discussion that warrants the board's attention.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Anyone else?
Yes, I had one other question, if I, actually two. One would be, in just the calculation, looks like, if I figured right, your 187 students in about three years is what that projection looks like for growth for Meadow Lane, which would be about eight new classrooms if you typically put a size of 22. My question really has to do with Manchester Park. I know that there was reference to Washington being kind of a relief for Washington. Are we at a point at Manchester Park that that is also a consideration?
Manchester Park would be a consideration. There's obviously some, there's some geographic, or man-made geographic structures such as K-10 that would have to be decided and debated. The pluses of having children cross K-10 highway or go under K-10 highway versus the amount of benefit that can be received at Manchester Park by doing a boundary, by doing a boundary adjustment with them. But that is definitely another school. I mean, there are three schools that would adjoin, that adjoin Woodland, excuse me, Meadow Lane that could go to this new school at Woodland if it's approved there. Obviously Meadow Lane would be one of the schools. I guess there's, and then Mahaffey, Washington, and Manchester Park. We specifically mentioned Washington just because of the fact that it is today, right now, needing some enrollment relief. Manchester Park is a growing school. And that's something that we'll need to look at, balancing how best to address Manchester Park, whether it is through another new school, building additions, or boundary adjustments.
I just think if, again, if what Mr. Churchman talked about in looking at size and looking at diversity, if there's a plan or consideration for that, are we actually pulling those students mentally from those different schools and saying, "This is what comprises this school"? Because we're knowing that that growth is going to take place in three or four years. It won't just be Meadow Lane.
No, it won't be, there'll be other students that will attend this other than just Meadow Lane.
Okay, thank you.
And to that point, I think we need to be very detailed as to how we can figure that, what that looks like.
How about timeframe? If we're trying to get this elementary school open for 2008-09 school year, when is kind of the outside date that we have to, we need to make a decision to move forward?
I believe we, I believe the agenda indicates we'll be back at the September board meeting with fee proposals from architects. And that would be the date at which we have to decide that we move ahead. September is not the latest we've ever started, but it's close to the latest we've ever started. But that would be a reasonable date. So we'll be back in September with fee proposals for architects, and then that would start us down the road. And I think we're on a schedule where 2008's reasonable.
Okay.
I'd like to know, at what point in time do we have to agree upon what the size is going to be? If that's an issue that we're going to study. If you could give us some guidance on that so we don't uphold your timeline, or infringe upon your timeline?
To have a 2008 opening and fee proposals approved in September, we'll need to be able to give the architects direction very quickly after the September board meeting, after their contract is approved. First thing they'll do is start on their preliminary design. So at that point, I won't say, "We'll approve it on Thursday night, and on Friday we need to tell them." But that board meeting would be the ideal time to come up with some direction for our architects. And we'd be glad to give you some options. I'll try to put together a proposal that night that also takes in consideration of design and some sizes that we could look at.
Because the one thing in regards to sizes in that is, as Mr. Thomasson said, our school down south, with not just the amount of classroom space it's put in it, but also the special, the specialty rooms that are added in it, that school's got a capacity, we're estimating right now at about 650 to 700 students, which is by far, without a school having an addition on it, the biggest school we've built in terms of a school opening at a certain capacity level. Sunnyside has a higher capacity today, but that's only because we've added eight rooms to it. I mean, as far as schools with an opening capacity, I would probably say that Madison Place will be our biggest school we've built in terms of capacity.
And so, the guidance that I'm looking for is not only on numbers of classrooms and size from that perspective, but also what is the growth potential? What are we going to build in from an infrastructure point of view that would accommodate any of those future growth needs that our, our crystal ball may say would be prudent for us to do?
Anyone else? Thank you for those comments. Thank you, Mr. Greilip.
Mr. Gellmer, if I could, to me, this brings up two broader issues that I'd like to just have some brief discussion around, and that is the whole growth situation for the district. And what I would like to propose, that we as a board adopt some type of regular focus meetings, whether it's quarterly or semiannually, and I think we need to start in September, particularly with this issue in front of us, where we really focus solely on the entire growth position of the district, meaning we go through all the elementary schools, all the junior highs, and all the, all the high schools, and, and really try and get that puzzle in front of us, and I believe that it's imperative that we keep that view in front of us on a regular basis in order to, to really address that. And the second aspect of that, I guess, goes to Dr. All about my desire to see a growth balanced scorecard. I look at the outstanding package that we have from Mr. Deener and his staff on the budget, which serves as a tremendous resource throughout the year. I would like to see something similar for growth, where we have a, a chart that lists every school and, and gives it a green, yellow, red status, meaning yellow and red are those things that require some type of growth decision by this board throughout the upcoming year, and also list our forecasted growth, and then as our actuals come due, we put the actuals in there. And I think that's important, not only from the perspective of, it's certainly not an issue of questioning our forecast, but just, I think we need to have in our mind that understanding of forecast versus actual, so we can continually reflect upon what that does to those, those growth puzzles that we as a board need to address. And I personally believe that this is really a precursor to our bond efforts that we've got coming down the road, and so those are two points that I put out for your consideration on the boards.
One thing, I didn't have an opportunity to talk to Chris about some of this discussion, but that because we're using the balanced scorecard approach, you know, having something that would be sort of a windshield look, high level, that we could look at to say, where are the hotspots? Because Chris knows this information intimately, and even though we present it from time to time, every time I come back, I learn more, and then I'm, he gets me worried. And, and then secondly, so I'll work with Mr. Houghton and Greg and Chris to come up with something that, that does reflect more of a, of an ongoing kind of document with the balanced scorecard kind of approach, and I, and I like that concept as we're looking at that, because the data's there. It's just a matter of kind of how that's formatted to make that user-friendly for the board. And then also in terms of the growth meetings, you know, this August, can't remember which meetings, which, August 17th, when we have the joint meeting with the city and school board, one of the major topics will be growth, both of the planners from the city and Chris, and we're working together on that joint presentation. So, that'd be a nice kickoff for that discussion. And then at the bond, for the bond task force report out, there'll be some revisiting, not a lot, but some revisiting as, as, as part of their discussion. And then I would suggest that that September meeting, special meeting, the third meeting of the month, be maybe focused for the board's consideration on growth and further discussion on the capital improvement needs of this district as reported to the board. So, I think we can set that up, and then how we do on an ongoing basis, you know, where we've got that third meeting of the month, and I think maybe on, on semiannually, we could really focus, because the growth's not going to go away. I mean, these topics are going to continue to come back to the board.
Did you hear that? She said, "third meeting of the month."
Oh, did I? I meant third Thursday.
Thank you, Dr. All.
And if I could just add one thing there, one of the things that we've been working on towards Mr. Churchman's suggestion is kind of a, a form to get the board acquainted to the growth issues that was included in this report on Meadow Lane, a two-page kind of summary, that hopefully gives you a kind of encompassment, a detailed look at Meadow Lane, but we've got that kind of, that form and that information set up for all 31 of our elementary schools. So, taking that information and put it into a summary form will be something we can do.
Right.
Thank you.
We probably, and we're all aware of this, though, that to be cognit, cognizant of the timeline that we have talked about, and that we have to carefully, as we look at that long-term projections of our growth, that we aren't, that we don't react immediately to at least the beginnings of knowing what's going to be a need for addressing that growth for 2008, for, for that project.
All right. Chris, thank you very much. Our next agenda item relates to the Miracle League baseball proposal related to use of district land. And if you recall, we, we had a presentation a couple of meetings ago about the Miracle League, which I think was well-received by all. Dr. All and myself and Jim Ader have been a part of another meeting regarding this. The interest in this continues to grow across the community, and you saw some background information in your agenda items. You also have a couple of pictures that were handed out, and there's also in, in your board docs, information related to the College Boulevard Activity Center. And the direction that this project appears to be heading, and what we're talking about tonight, just to bring you information about this, is to make sure you're aware of the direction that we're heading, and if there's any concerns that we hear about that, and also get kind of general consensus. We've targeted, how are we going to identify this spot? Is, is it going to be on the screen?
It may have to be like, can you put it on Elmo? Okay.
We looked at several areas, including the ODAC and the Seaback area, and-
Jim Ader is going to go up, he can help point to your comments, Kevin.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, originally, we, well, we looked at both sides of ODAC and Seaback to see if anything was feasible, and there really wasn't anything large enough at ODAC that would, you know, that would meet the needs that they're looking for. So, at Seaback, we really identified three different areas, and I don't know if we can see them all. One is really down to this side of the-
It's this, it's this picture.
Yeah, if I can get this one up.
It's the difference, you've got-
Yeah.
There we go.
Got it? Okay.
Okay. First one we looked at was this area right in here, which was next to where the current football stadium is. There was a large area there that we thought we could put a, a stadium that would meet the needs of what they're looking for. The other area was down in here, we have quite a bit of land around the Meadow Lane area. We really didn't consider that very long, we've taken a lot of land away from there already. The discussion really went to, if this became something that was successful, they have an idea of in the future, maybe creating a Miracle League kind of for soccer. So, we're looking for space that we might have that might be extended a little bit. So, the area that we kind of focused on, if you can tell, is this area that's just to the south of the South softball field. We kind of decided on that, I went to Greg and asked Greg if that was a possibility, and we met with the construction people, and the architects are kind of, were concerned about where the power lines, the water lines, and all those were. There is a possibility, we've looked, that we could put a field and a second field in there if we needed to. And I think you've known from your report, that's the main role that we've been playing in this, as a school district, because not the fundraiser or anything, but if there was something we could do to help with this, this portion of our population, providing a special opportunity, was for the district to see if we had land to provide, and so that's kind of where we are at this point, at least, to see if this is something that would be acceptable to you, and how we would move on from there, and what steps we would take. So, if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer any of those questions that-
Let me fill in a little bit more information about where, how this appears to be heading. The, the city is going, is, appears to be offering the Parks and Recreation Department to facilitate the program, manage the program. They also use the Parks and Rec Foundation to be the conduit for the fundraising that's done, so it's an, already an identified charitable organization. The Aletha Medical Center is standing behind this with a financial pledge, and as well a number of other people and organizations are. And what am I missing, Dr. All? Some in-kind, Mid-American Nazarene University is offering some in-kind services for their students and community involvement. And what we're talking about here with this land is not a donation of the land, but more kind of a lease arrangement, and a probably bargain lease arrangement, where we retain control of the property, but yet we're allowing it to be used for this program, this wonderful program. And so, that's the area that we think is going to work best, and at this point, I think the next step's another meeting, putting some requests for proposals together from local architectural engineering firms to help with developing the plans for the building of the actual field.
We've done some preliminary work with, with Scott Mason, what kind of language would be there, talked to Greg quite a bit on more of a landlord tenant kind of thing, you know, where we would, you know, there would be certain standards they'd have to meet, and Greg has a lot of expertise in that area, so I really would be just providing that structure, probably providing a little bit of the operations, because we'd have to open it up for them. They, they typically, I think if you saw from their presentation, they play six Saturdays in the fall, and six in the spring, it's not something that they use. And it would not be something that would be used for anything else, would strictly be for that kind of facility.
And how many acres are we talking about roughly?
Greg, I have to tell you, acres. It's about 280 feet this direction, 140 feet that way.
That's good.
It's less than an acre.
Less than an acre, yeah.
But one of the reasons we chose that site is it has the ability perhaps to build a second field, or a combination baseball soccer, if that's where that goes, but it leaves some options open there for us, for the program down the road. Eventually, when a lone elm interchange is, is put in, we'd tremendous access from a greater area to that site, and there's just a lot of pluses to it, and-
And I think the other thing, if you're familiar with what they, with what they want, they want locker, you know, they want bathrooms and all those things, this is already handicapped accessible. We have locker rooms and restrooms they can use, so really most of the facilities are already there for them to use without having to build that into the cost of building the facility.
Good. So, if there is no objection, this is the direction that we're going to continue to head in these meetings and offer the services of the district in terms of that land and some operational management of the facility itself. Does that sound good to everyone?
As far as the infrastructure, then, the fundraising would be the actual conduit to, to construct the field.
Correct.
Yep. So, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be, we providing the operations on the land, but we wouldn't be participating in the construction of the fields from a, from a monetary standpoint.
No.
With only six games in the fall and spring, then, could they lease that out for usage to others?
Really, I understand with the city and running this program, we, we really are creating a field that's not as big as what they typically have, so it would not be used for other things, that we could really restrict the use of it strictly for that, and since it'll be inside our fenced area, we really have a way to control what it's being used for and who uses it.
We imagine the contract language in the lease agreement will be pretty restrictive in terms of they can't do other things without our consent kind of language.
You know, and hopefully, the, the resources there, and, and I think we even said, you know, hopefully it could be used more than six Saturdays in the fall and the six in the spring, but it would be guided for the purpose of the children that have the special needs to use this facility. And the other part that we can always consider, and that is even in the operating costs, just like we do in other areas, depending on how Parks and Rec operates it, you know, we can have more discussion on our role in supporting the opening of that, or if we expect some additional assistance on that, that, that's not going to be a heavy cost. These children will be a lot of our Aletha children, but they will also be from the region, because these are children who may be medically fragile, who have multiple physical needs, who, this is going to be an opportunity for them to play ball, and, and play ball where other kids play ball and sports. So, I, I think we can work this all out, and, and obviously, everything would be brought back, but we need to know, is this, you know, something that you can support, because everybody's kind of ready to get going on it? And, and again, the private funding, the funding for this is private, and other individuals have told me that they believe that to raise the money for this is going to be very easy, because there are a lot of people that are lining up that want to be part of saying that they helped bring this to Aletha.
Will we retain construction management authority?
What we talked about to this point, with Mr. Mason and Mr. Ader, is no, that we would be more, that they would, they would build this themselves, that we would provide more of a landlord relationship, and that we would review the drawings, ensure that it met the standards that could fit on our site, that, that we wouldn't actually be involved, nor would our construction managers be involved in the actual construction of the project. That would be someone else.
Okay.
We, we have a hard enough time, I can't, you know, meeting the requirements to account for our funds without trying to account for somebody else's funds was my, was my concern.
But we will have some over, you will review it according, meet our standard, that's why, I guess that's what I was looking for.
I think the language we were talking about is just as typical tenant landlord agreement in which the landlord has the right to review the drawings and review the standards of the, and approve the documents before they're constructed, and we would hope to have that. We would probably provide some sort of periodic inspections during construction to ensure it was being built according to our standards, and that our utilities and our infrastructure wasn't being damaged by their construction. So, so we would certainly take an interest in it, and I think that's what we've discussed with Mr. Ader and Mr. Mason as far as what an agreement might look like.
Good. Good. Good question. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Agenda item 2.03 is the presentation on the district's crisis management team, an overview presented by Dr. Bob Hall. Welcome, Dr. Hall.
Thank you and good evening, and appreciate this opportunity to briefly overview and highlight the work of the district's crisis management team. On any typical day in America, it is good for us to remember that approximately 25% of our population is in a school setting. And our district mission statement says that we will provide a safe environment where all students acquire skills, knowledge, abilities, and behaviors necessary to become productive citizens in an ever-changing world. We also know and believe in Aletha that our duty of care to our students goes beyond the academic learning focus of, of schools, and also goes to other critical needs and other critical areas of the students. Knowing all of this, starting back in 1991, the district has worked hard to put together a model school crisis management program and team dedicated to making a positive difference when crisis events do occur in schools. So, the question is not if a school crisis will happen, but when it happens, how prepared are we to handle the situation? Our district crisis team exists in order to prevent, also sometimes called mitigation, plan for, respond to, recover from emergency situations in our school. We talk a lot about first responders, and in our, in our community, we have excellent first responders, fire, police, med act, and others. We're talking here as school officials as first first responders. And for those of you who have been in that situation, you know those critical minutes, until the emergency professional responders do arrive, seem interminably long and are so crucial to the final outcome of whatever the crisis situation is. Our district team consists of 35 people, made up of, you see the listing there, of people from Aletha Fire, Aletha Police, Emergency Management, Overland Park Fire and Police, Lenexa Fire and Police, Johnson County Med Act, Johnson County Health, Johnson County Emergency Management, as well as several key district staff, as well as we work with other relief agencies, American Red Cross, Salvation Army, and our faith community. We have defined a crisis in the schools as a situation in a school setting where additional resources are needed from outside of the school building to help resolve a situation and return that situation to normal. Some facts about the crisis team. Last year, we had 126 logged school crisis events. That follows that definition. 50% of these were 911 calls. Most of those 911 calls were medical situations, medical emergencies. Typically, the majority involved staff, not necessarily students. Information taken from our recent district quality-wide survey shows that 93% of our staff feel that they work in a safe workplace. 98% of our elementary student parents felt that their child had a safe school environment. 96% of our secondary parents felt that their child had a safe environment. This goes back to our mission statement. Last year, we had 668 staff certified in CPR, cardio pulmonary resuscitation training. Also, last year, we had 356 who were certified in first aid, and again, last year, we had over 600, 617 who were certified, who had received certified training in the AED, the Automated Defibrillator. We are so fortunate that all of our school buildings have a defibrillator here in the Aletha School District, again, due to the support of the Aletha School District and administration. Another key point is that all of our schools last year successfully completed a tabletop exercise. A tabletop exercise is a real-life situation taken from our crisis log that we will send to a school building. We will give them a specified, a specified amount of time, that they have to gather together, the building crisis team, they have to respond to that crisis situation, and send a response to us, the district team, and we will critique and review that as a learning, training opportunity. Also in addition, we now have 10 of our schools that have received or have qualified as a Gold Shield school. A Gold Shield school is a higher standard that we put, schools who volunteer for this opportunity. We have an audit team come out and look at their school, and we say we want to look at all prepared materials you have surrounding crisis preparation and prevention. We want to review all that information. That's phase one of the audit. Phase two of the audit is we say, you pick a drill, and we are- Phase two of the audit is we say you pick a drill and we are going to critique your school-wide drill, and we'll give them feedback. Phase three of that is they gather their building team and we present them a tabletop crisis situation, and they immediately have to respond, and we critique their response to this crisis situation. And 10 of our schools have qualified as Gold Shield Schools. Our district plan, since 1999, when Columbine happened out in Colorado, we have received requests for over, from 200 different agencies or schools for copies of our district crisis plan. When we put our plan together and we've revised our plan either four or five times now, we purposely chose not to copyright this material, because we felt to some degree, all school children were like our school children, and if something worked here, we wanted the availability to share that with others. Our school district has a distinction. We have a couple of staff members that also receive certification from the state of Kansas as a certified emergency manager. Our team and personnel are active, local, state, regional, and national levels, and several boards, committees, involvement opportunities. We have participated in several publications, writing about crisis management material and also been written about. A good example of that, three years ago, the federal government put together a model school plan, and in that plan, we had a chance to participate as one of the teams who authored that, and also Aletha School District was cited as a positive reference in that publication. Community involvement, we are heavily involved in our community's crisis response plan. Sheltering, we have several opportunities for sheltering. Let me just call example to a couple of them. Recently, with our heat wave, we were asked by the city of Aletha to put up a couple of cool shelters, which we did in our community, and we had a few folks from our community take advantage of that. Three winters ago, during an ice storm, we were asked to put together a shelter for a nursing home that had lost power and they had no place to go. We put that plan together and then ended up not having to use it. Also, in a recent fire at a nursing home, we were asked to provide shelter for about 150 nursing home residents, and so we geared up for that. And again, due to some other circumstances that didn't happen. And last year, with Hurricane Katrina, we were asked to be part of a countywide team to put together a sheltering for refugees from Hurricane Katrina. Also, we help our community with emergency food distribution. We have such a tremendous resource next door, we can produce 20,000 meals in a day. American Red Cross and other agencies are highly interested in that and talk to us continually about opportunities for help out with emergency food distribution. And again, another example, with the nursing home fire, we did provide some emergency meals to the residents and staff at the nursing home. Also, we have been designated as a site for mass distribution of medicine under several different scenarios, and we are actually working with Johnson County Health and other agencies to take that a step farther. There's been some preliminary discussions if our medical facilities in our community become overloaded. What about surge capacity? Could some of our school facilities be used as surge capacities, and how would that work out? We've been in discussion with that. And we've partnered with our community in several training opportunities and drills. And again, as I said, we serve on several boards, councils that deal with crisis emergency management. And we have the distinction, the Aletha School District, we have six of our school personnel who are trained, certified, that is a community emergency response team. That is one of the things under the Citizen Corp umbrella that has come out of 9/11. We have taken the all-hazards approach in designing our plan. The all-hazards is a comprehensive plan built around the four phases of emergency management, the four phases of emergency management, or mitigation or prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery, also sometimes called contingency. We're doing more and more work in the contingency phase. Some priorities that we have for this coming year. We are preparing and distributing new classroom crisis posters for all of the classrooms in the district. About 10 years ago, we went to Universal Drills. This has helped us a lot. After 10 years, the posters have kind of become wallpaper, if you would, in some of the buildings. And so we asked up at Aletha Northwest, the Design Graphics Communication Department, if they could take the kids and help us come up with the new design. What a tremendous opportunity. And we looked at 26 different entries in this poster design contest from our students. You can imagine what a crisis poster looks like in Gothic print and Gothic art. That was just one of the entries that was a little more interesting, but we chose new posters based upon our student work. Also, last year, we piloted individual classroom crisis kits. For many years, we've had building crisis kits. Last year, we piloted in several of our schools, individual classroom crisis kits, and they have been a smashing hit. And so we looked on the internet, and these kits were available, pretty nice kits, but were priced at $199 per unit, and we know that we didn't have money for that. So we tried to put our creative heads together, and we designed our own kit, worked with our suppliers, and we have put these kits together, and they cost just under $20 per kit, per classroom. It's a lot more affordable. And so this year, we've been able to put classroom crisis kits in all of our elementary schools and some of our secondary schools. We'll work until we get that completely across the district. Also, we're about completing a pandemic influenza plan for the district. Again, this is something that we hope that we never have to use, but without that planning in case that does happen, we would have a lot of ground to make up. So we're about complete for that. That's emphasis for this year. We're also working on a reunification process. That means in the unlikely situation that we would have to evacuate the school during the school day, we need some very precise, clear directive orders of how that process would take place. We want them universally and standard implemented across the district. And so we've worked on that, and we're going to unveil that this year. We're also working on Baldridge, recreating some benchmarks, dealing with the crisis management team. And we will participate in one or more major exercises for this year. On August 31st, for example, Johnson County Health, in conjunction with the State Health Department and the National Health Department, is going to have an exercise, a functional exercise out of Aletha Northwest School. We've agreed to be the host for that, and they're going to try to process about 1,000 citizens if they had to give them vaccines for the pandemic flu. They're actually going to do an exercise, and we will be the host and help participate in that. Finally, I know we've gone pretty fast here, but we just want you to know that the success of our crisis management program is due to the continued support of the Board of Education, our superintendent, and other key people across the district. Without this success, our support, the success would not be possible. And again, our purpose is to prevent, plan, respond, and recover from crisis emergency situations in our school. And we know that we can't prevent these situations, but we know when they happen, we work hard to help them have a positive outcome to these crisis and critical situations. If there's any questions or comments, I would stand for those.
Dr. Hall, great presentation. I'd like some reflection from you and the staff, recommendations on adding surveillance cameras to the exterior of all of our buildings, the schools, particularly in lieu of our bonds upcoming. I think that falls under the guise of certainly prevention. And what really brought that thought to mind was just being advised of some recent vandalism that occurred at one of our elementary schools. And certainly, surveillance cameras are not just for vandalism, but also for the prevention aspect of anything that could be formulating outside of a building. So I'd welcome some thoughts back from staff on that.
Physical security is always an issue that we deal with, and we deal with to the best of our abilities, but certainly, there's always more opportunity to check into that.
Dr. Hall, how does our, I know during the year, we have the Neighborhood Watch Program in the, still, is that continuing in the elementary levels?
Yes. Yes, and you know, we have the McGruff House. And Jim, I think the term is McGruff trucks. We have district trucks that have been certified also as they go throughout the neighborhoods to be on the alert and a safe place for children who may experience a situation or be in trouble that they can go to. So we also try to coordinate those activities with our community to provide safe havens for our children.
Do those continue to be of assistance as a deterrent for vandalism in any way?
Yes. Yes. And, you know, hard data for that would be a little difficult to come by, but yes, they do. We feel that they do.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
I just wanted to compliment Dr. Hall and all of the emergency management staff. It feels good to know that our children are safe and to know that in the event there is an emergency, that we have prepared for that and that we are going to be able to take the right kinds of steps to mitigate any unfortunate incidents that would happen on our schools. And as a board member, and as a taxpayer, and as a parent, and knowing lots of students in the school, that feels really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Dr. Hall. Appreciate that presentation. Dr. George is going to present some, an overview of the recent Kansas Supreme Court decision. Welcome, Dr. George.
Good evening. The Kansas Supreme Court has issued a decision in the Montoy case, and they indicated that they would like to have the case sent back to the lower court and dismissed. And they had done that based on several points of rationale. One was that a great deal had been done in responding to earlier opinions of the court to begin to address some of the issues in school finance. More funding, more money for at-risk, some adjustments to the high enrollment weighting or correlation weighting, some changes in special education funding, et cetera. They also felt like there had been a significant change in the statute. Senate Bill 549 fundamentally changed the way we were funding schools in that it was a three-year plan rather than a one-year plan, a number of other changes in it. And then they also looked at the history of those states that had tried to come up with equitable funding through the judicial process, and they found that it was an extremely lengthy judicial process and not necessarily successful. And so they didn't feel that that was necessarily a road that they wanted to go down. There were two other parts to this decision that are important. There were two stays that had previously been placed on items that the legislature had approved. One of those was the high cost of living. This impacts 18 districts, and in those districts where there's high housing costs, there is the opportunity for districts to increase their budget by adopting a resolution, if indeed they have, are using the maximum LOB, to adopt a resolution and publish it and then wait for a period of time, 30 days, and then if there's no protest, they can go forward, or if there's a protest, there may have to be an election. That would allow districts then to increase their budget by up to 5%. In some cases, it's less than that, and that's the amount that is worked out by the State Department. That also is all locally funded. There's no state aid in that. So it is an issue that impacts local property tax levies, and it's something that has to be thought about. The second stay dealt with those districts that have extraordinarily declining enrollment. And it once again is a way that a district can enact a local property tax to compensate for the loss of revenue that's associated with the loss of students. And so those two stays were lifted. Now that the court has acted, we can begin to move forward. We know what they've said, and this case is now ended. Senate Bill 549 could be litigated, but that's going to have to be something that will be another day and will have to wait until the three-year plan is over, and then if anybody wants to do anything, they'll have to begin to move at that point. We look forward to working with our legislators. Obviously, there are things in this bill that we would like to see improved or modified, and I think that's probably true of most of the school districts in the state, too. And so we'll be looking forward to seeing if we can't make it a little bit better. Are there questions?
Could you share some of the things you'd like to see changed?
Well, one of those is that the, there's a provision in the at-risk funding that has only been funded for one year, the non-proficient at-risk. And obviously, it's difficult to build long-term programs on something that's in statute only one year. And so that's something that we want to address. The special education funding was raised up to 92%, but it stops. And we would like to see that at least stay at 92% if not be improved. And over the years, that has fluctuated up and down, and sometimes it goes down as low as the low 80s and then back up. When it goes down, we have to transfer more money out of the general fund over to special education. That's an issue that we would like to see addressed. The high enrollment weighting or correlation weighting, this year, it's worth almost $1 million to us, a little less than $1 million. But next year, it won't be worth nearly that much, because the numbers change. That's an issue that we think we need to take a look at, because that is something that would help larger districts across the state certainly help us. Special education helps all districts and certainly helps us. So there's some things like that that we want to take a look at that might be able to help us out a little bit.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Dr. George.
Thank you.
This would be a good time for us to take our comfort break, board, for about 10 minutes, and then we'll have our recognitions and awards and then our public comments. So we'll adjourn for about 10 minutes.